And as you can see, I'm not Joan. Um, but I'm glad to be here tonight and I'm going to call the meeting uh to order at seven o'clock. Is there anyone who'd like to remove anything from the consent agenda? Joy? Shane?
Seven A.
Seven A, thank you sir. And Keith?
I do have something, um.
I bet it's seven A. Is it the expenses?
No, no, I leave that up to you.
He knows you're gonna ask.
Yes, I know that you're gonna ask. Bear with me just for a second.
Sure.
I'm sorry, I forgot darn glasses, so I'm having.
Oh no.
I know.
I can send you that. If you need any help, I can help you.
No, I said I went, I went, um.
See, that's why you need paper.
I took a picture here.
Okay.
Okay, I wanted to talk about the.
Do you have the page number?
I think, you know where you know you compare this year to last year for certain expenses?
Mm-hmm.
I want to talk about the room rental.
Okay.
And the water. And then I had some questions in the um, the audit report.
Okay.
So.
The audit's not part of the consent agenda.
Oh, okay, that's fine. So just, just those first two things.
And we'll hear.
But you can ask those questions when we get to the audit.
Okay, perfect. Yeah, so I hope I can see them.
Okay. I will help you out, I will help you out.
What is that saying here? Dude, I can't read your handwriting, so.
Could I have a motion then to approve the um items on the regular consent agenda? Uh, wait. Oh no, I'm sorry. Okay, we'll go back to that. We're going to the president's report. I removed that motion, thank you. Um, anyway, I'm not the president, but I will say happy fall starts tomorrow. Um, one of my favorite times of the year and I will say that we had a spectacular summer. I think most of our gardens were absolutely stunning. Um, I think we had such a wonderful group of of patrons coming in to be part of the book club and enjoying what we have to offer and celebrating that we're back and that we're, you know, here for them always. And this is really the core for them. So I, I just am so happy. We have two new board members. That was part of our summer, summer fun. And our spring fun was um Shane, so we've just been having a great time. But I will say that fall is a great time and I think that we celebrate that with the changing of the leaves, with the cider mills running and the schools starting. And so um I look forward to a great fall and spending more time getting to know our new board members. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to the director.
Thank you. Um, well, my thing is tonight is that I'm very pleased to introduce Monica Dowar, our new finance coordinator.
Yay.
Monica, hi. Thank you.
So Monica is coming to us from the Ypsilanti District Library, where she has been serving in this a similar role. She's been here two weeks today. This is her two week anniversary. Um, and I think she's settling in and learning her way around the building and the finances and. How do you think things are going, Monica?
Things are going very well. I'm very happy to be here.
And I bet you love your commute.
I, oh, I love my commute. It's great.
Yes, she lives right around here and she commuted every day to Ypsilanti, so.
Yes. Yes.
Oh, yeah, that's changed.
Yeah, yeah, that's great. So we're delighted you're here.
I am delighted to be here. Thank you.
And we're, we are a wonderful board, so I think you'll get to know me.
Well, I hope that's true.
Self-professed.
I'm very modest, so, but we're, I think that you'll enjoy, I know we'll enjoy working with you, so welcome. Thank you.
Okay. Do we need to say our names for you or? I mean, I think you know who you all are.
Well, this is Keith.
Okay.
You've met Judy before.
Yeah, I have.
And this is Joy. And you've met Shane, so.
Oh, that makes me nervous.
I mean, I'm sure.
And she's met Joan, because uh Shane and Joan were on the finance committee and Monica has had to meet.
Okay.
So it's just Danny and you'll get to know Danny.
Um, so Monica has been working with Toby, who is our tenth accountant from Dorian, New York, who has got us through these last few months very capably and cheerfully. And um, I'm grateful that he is continuing to to train Monica and will stick around for a few more weeks.
We heard every word you said, even though we were kind of.
Yes, you did. I know, you you absorbed it, yes. Um, well, as you're all aware, a couple of weeks ago in August, there was a very sudden storm that went through the area and knocked power out for many people. Um, and many of those people found a refuge in the library, including Joy, um, because they didn't have electricity, but the library did. And so we saw rec- not record, but very large numbers of people in the library those couple of days after that storm as power was being restored. Um, there were over a thousand people in here on Tuesday, just under a thousand people on Wednesday. And um, I don't know, right around eight or nine hundred on Thursday.
All at the same time or during the day?
During the day. So between nine thirty and nine P M.
Yep, it was tough to find electrical outlets. You all were really accommodating. The thing that I was most struck with was how um, available everybody was on the staff and how you were out talking to people and greeting people and.
Couldn't necessarily listen.
Yes, everybody was happy, opening up space and directing people around. It was, it was great.
You know, we've said a bunch of times that this library functions as a center for the whole community. I think that's exactly what you're talking about right there.
Yes, definitely.
Somebody referred to it as a muster station for the community. It was.
Oh, interesting. They obviously like Civil War.
Yeah. Um, well, our in-person programming is also feels like uh twenty nineteen. Again, we've got a full slate of programs in youth services and adult and we're having great attendance and getting great feedback for all of those. We had a concert on Friday, September nineteenth, I'm sorry, September ninth. We hosted the band Nessa, which is a Celtic jazz fusion group. We had about ninety people here, from ages two to ninety. Um, yeah, yeah.
Where was, where was that done?
In the community room.
Okay.
Lots of people asking if we're having more concerts and of course we said we are because the Chamber Music Concerts will be held this fall and we have another group um scheduled, yeah. No bumper, beginning and a bumper, I think, today. I think it's the Friday before the Chamber Music Concert, actually. So it feels good to be back to doing all the things that we love to do and that our, we know our community loves as well. Bloomfield Township recently hired a new director of cable and community relations. Her name is Carrie Lozat. Um, and she uh, she has a very interesting background in documentary filmmaking. And she's also worked for several large corporations and done uh video for staff training and and other kinds of communications. Catherine and I had a great meeting with her and talked about ways we can deepen the relationship between the library and and the community relations department of the township. Had lots of great ideas. It was, it was nice and I feel hopeful about that relationship. Um, speaking of Catherine, one of Catherine's jobs is to arrange for staff training. And in August, the topic was materials challenges, which we've been talking about a lot in this group. Um, so we convened some pretty big groups of staff, twenty each time. Actually, Keith is a time.
I thought it was a wonderful class.
Yes. Um, we reviewed, Catherine reviewed that upholding the First Amendment, freedom of speech is a really core value of libraries. Uh, we reiterated that the library director and the library board of trustees uphold those values as well and um is against any kind of censorship. Uh, Catherine and I played out a couple of scenarios that might pop up, that staff might encounter and gave them some ways that they might deal with those uh scenarios. And then I just wanted to ask if anybody saw the article in the Free Press about the Dearborn Public Schools?
No, I didn't see that.
The seven books were challenged at the Dearborn Public Schools Library and have been removed for review, or at least the last article I read. Um, and um, the Dearborn Public Schools gave their students access to the Dearborn Public Library's ebook collection through Overdrive or Libby. Um, and that had been temporarily suspended while this review was underway. So these challenges continue to royal around the community and um, yeah, continue to watch them.
Can I comment on something?
Sure.
Yeah, I um, I took that trustee one oh two class today.
Yeah.
Um, the lady who uh runs that, I'm sorry, I can't remember her.
Was it Claire?
Claire. She is extremely knowledgeable and um very, very articulate and information-thence. But she was talking about that issue today and she said something I wasn't aware of, that the debt, the concept of something being obscene is a well-defined legal concept. And you can't have somebody come to you and say, I think the content of this book is obscene, because the only person who can judge whether something is obscene is a judge. So not somebody's personal opinion. So that I thought was an interesting thing to reflect back to somebody who says, this book has obscene material in it. Well, hasn't been judged obscene legally. If it's been legally judged ju- judged obscene, the library has to remove it because it's illegal. But if it hasn't been, it's not obscene until that time. I thought it was a fascinating point. I didn't realize that it was, that it worked that way. So just wanted to mention that.
All right, interesting.
Good. Um, that's the end of my report.
Thank you. Um, and just as an aside, I did go to the historical, the Louisville Historical Society's lecture on Sunday and I can gladly tell you, the seats are very comfortable, so I was very pleased, um, so.
I'm glad you're happy.
Yes, okay, it's only that, so. Okay, thank you. Um, so now we need to have that motion to approve the remaining consent agenda items. Would someone please make that?
I move to approve.
Thank you, Keith. Is there a second? One second. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Very good. So now we can move on. Now we have a call to the public and I'm casting my eyes to the lovely Ms. Bryant.
Hello. So we're just working away, anxiously awaiting our holiday party. So we planned it last year but had to pause because of the pandemic. So we're working to get the list to send out the invitations and things of that nature. And we're just continuing to um pay tribute to our staff and do small in-kind token events throughout the library to show how much we appreciate what they do for staff and the public.
Well, you do wonderful things. So now would you please, um, for our new board members and our new staff member, tell us the date, location, and time of said, it's December fourth.
December fourth and it's at the.
The Yeracoi Club.
Yeracoi Club. And it is themed, we're doing a murder mystery dinner party.
From the twenties, right?
Twenties, thirties here. Costumes are encouraged, not required.
Encouraged, yeah.
Okay, nineteen twenties costumes, isn't it?
Uh-huh, uh-huh. And it starts at five or six, okay, okay.
I think it's more like thirty-six, sixty-three.
Okay, thank you, thank you so much. And again, we always say applause to the staff. They do wonderful things, so we appreciate it.
Will, will there be an f- an, an email that comes up or a question for?
Yes, there will be.
You'll get an invitation, yes. Yeah, it is beautiful.
Okay, an invitation. Okay, perfect.
Alan, we're gonna get to you in just a second. So um, there is no unfinished business, so now we're gonna turn it over to the new business. And I'm gonna turn it over first to Tara.
Yeah.
Um, and she can make introductions to Alan.
Yes, thank you. So Alan Panther is our auditor. He has been for the last few years. Um, as I mentioned, um Shane and Joan, as the finance committee, met with Alan a couple of weeks ago and reviewed the audit. And I think that's all I need to say. I'll just. I can, unless you have me to stall while you can have a booklet.
No, I can uh, I can go while I'm getting these out. So these are our copies.
Is this the same material that was sent out?
Yes, this was in the whole thing.
Okay. Right.
You'll always get a hard copy, so, yeah, and.
This is out.
The, the presentation there was not included.
It's your choice whether to keep it or just leave it here, unless you're told to keep it.
Okay. The pres- the top document there was not included.
This one.
Yeah, that's just my, that's my presentation.
And there will be a motion on page twenty-nine um of your packet when we get this.
And I'll sit over here just because of the filming, camera. All right. Well, Keith and Joy, it's nice to meet you.
Nice meeting you.
Hey. So.
And Alan, um, you may, Keith, you may have run across Alan's name in your uh training today because Alan wrote the book on public library finance. It was a public library finance guide.
Oh, okay. They mentioned that book, okay, yes.
Yeah, yeah, I wrote that.
It's, it's actually, it's actually included in that big giant binder that I gave you guys.
Three times. Yes, I remember that, yes.
I have a fun conversation.
Yeah, so that's, that's been a fun thing that I've had the privilege to, to work with the library commissioner um, over the years, so. That's been a, that's been a fun thing. And you mentioned Claire. Um, she's, she's terrific.
Yes. Yes, very knowledgeable.
Yeah, yeah, very good. All right, so Tara introduced me. I'm Alan Panther Parker at YOLO. And I'm here to present the audit. Materials that you have are three things. You have the bound audited financial statements. You have the stapled governance letter. And you also have my presentation. So, and we'll go over each one of those in turn as I go through this. So the audit went very well, uh, as it usually does. This year was, of course, a little bit unusual uh with Sandy's illness and working with a contracted accountant. Uh, even so, the library was well-prepared for the audit and we were able to complete our procedures efficiently. So I'd really like to thank your contracted accountant Toby. He did a great job. Um, Sandy in, in the, in kind of in the background still did a fantastic job, was very attentive to us and everything that we needed, any questions that we had. She was always there, you know, for anything. And is still there for anything if we needed, so. Um, so that's fantastic. And of course Tara, um, for her leadership. Um, that, that we really appreciate all of that. So thank you very much. We really appreciate everything that we get from the library. Um, the way that the process works for the audit is we come out in about May, which is when the library is ready. Uh, we do most of our procedures. Uh, and then it sits for a little while. And the reason it sits is because um, at the end, we compare it to the, the township's uh audited financial statements because the library participates in the township's um pension uh uh program. And so we report what's called a proportionate share. So we report um three, three percent, three and change of the pension liability that goes with the township. So we hold the, the report to compare it to the township's just to make sure that the entire plan is reported correctly between the two documents. So that's, that's all that really is. So, you know, honestly, we could, we could go a couple of months sooner if we weren't waiting for that. So um, really just waiting for, for that kind of validation of the township. We, we haven't had any problems with it in the last three or four years. Um, so anyway, so that's kind of how the timeline works. Uh, so our audit includes an examination of the financial reporting process, of internal controls, and certain aspects of legal compliance. So those are the things that, that we need to do as auditors. We look at the finances, we look at the internal controls. We have, we look at compliance as well. I'm pleased to report, uh, and when, so based on that examination, we uh, we would report in writing if anything was wrong. Anything that we find is wrong, we have a responsibility to report that in writing, okay? I'm pleased to report that based on that study and, and, and process, we have uh no uh written audit findings this year, no management layer comments. So that is a very positive reflection on the board and management of the library. So, well done. All right, so uh in the, in the presentation that I passed out, the first page is the, is, represents the independent auditor's report. The purpose of an audit is to give you an opinion on your financial statements, not to detect fraud and not to give assurance on internal control. So it's a very important concept about what it is that we're here to do. Our responsibilities are listed below on this slide. The first one being to render an opinion on your financial statements. So we did that. Uh, as well as to exercise professional judgment, uh identify and assess risks, and to evaluate the overall financial statement presentations. Those are the things that we're responsible for as the auditors. Management's responsibility is for the preparation and the fair presentation of the financial statements in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. So that's kind of a mouthful there. But also for the design and implementation of internal controls. So the internal controls of the library, that's of course management's responsibility to make sure that those are in place. Uh, and those internal controls allow for the timely and accurate compilation of the data that goes into the statement. So if you didn't have those internal controls, wouldn't be able to have the data summarized into these financial statements and then do an audit. So really, that's a key component is, is those controls that are operated by management. Um, so this slide represents our opinion on your financial statements. We're giving what's called an unmodified or cleaned opinion. That's, that is the best opinion you can get. And it means three things. It means first of all, the statements are formatted and presented in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. Also, uh, all parties fulfilled their responsibilities. So I kind of just ran over what our responsibilities, what management's responsibilities are. So everybody fulfilled their responsibilities. And also based on the procedures that we perform, the numbers are good, okay? So unmodified opinion is what you want to see. Okay? All right, so there's that slide. And we'll continue on. And this is uh, this is the balance sheet. And what we've done for the presentation is we've kind of simplified it. Normally, or if you look in the audited, full audited financial statements, you're gonna see the general fund side by side with the gift fund, but we took that out just for presentation purposes. Uh, so this only shows the general fund. This is a snapshot, a picture as of a point in time, as of March thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. And uh, so let's talk about fund balance. So in the bottom section there, you can see that fund balance is uh, it's your assets minus your liabilities. So that's your fund balance, okay? And um, you can see that the, the total fund balance, twelve million, three hundred eighty-six thousand, five hundred forty-two dollars. That's down a little bit from last year and we'll talk about that on the next slide. You can also see that the fund balance is broken down into uh four different components. So there's the non-spendable portion, there's committed, there's assigned, and there's unassigned. And I'll, I'll tell you what each one of those are. The um, the non-spendable portion corresponds to prepaid expenses. So those are, those are expenses that, that's been paid before the end of the year and it benefits the period after the end of the year. So it's, it's pulled out of there to indicate that it's not spendable, because it's already been spent, okay? Uh, and then there's an amount that's committed for cash flow. And what that has to do with is the fact that as of, as of March thirty-first year end, um, you guys have, at, at that point in time, you guys have just completed your uh property tax cycle. You probably haven't settled yet, but um you've completed your property tax cycle. So you've got all the cash that you need to operate for the upcoming year. So um, so that is set aside as uh, as committed because that's the money that you need to operate the library for the next eight months until you levy the tax again, okay? So that's why that's segregated out. And then um, there's six million dollars there that's assigned um for OPEB. So that's post-employment benefits, compensated absences and capital improvements. So um, the uh, and so those, those three things are, so that's the entire compensated absences balance. So that's basically all the second vacation banks that are um owed to employees. If they terminated, you know, as of that date, that's how much they would be paid out. Um, also, uh, the net OPEB obligation. So um, the library has a, a, a post-employment benefit um, uh, uh, program that uh, that, that um, it, it, there is a, there's also a uh, a, a trust that's associated with that. So there's assets, there's significant assets, uh, that are set aside against that liability in the trust. But on top of that, there's also fund balance that's assigned for the portion that, of that liability that is not in the trust. So the library is in a very fortunate position to be able to set aside the full amount of that liability, either in the trust or in fund balance. So that's, that's fantastic. Um, and then um, the third component of what's assigned is also assigned for capital. So there are about three point eight million of that six million that is assigned for capital um purposes, okay? So um, when we look at fund balance, we measure the adequacy of fund balance. How much fund balance do we have? How much, how does that compare to historical norms? How much should we have? Um, we measure the percentage of uh, or we measure the adequacy of fund balance as a percentage of annual expenditures. So as of uh, uh, March thirty-first, twenty twenty-two, uh, the library is at about a hundred and forty-six percent of annual expenditures. Last year is about two hundred and eight percent. So that's gone down. Uh, the, the decrease is due to higher expenditures due to capital outlays. The denominator of the equation changed um, because you guys had a significant capital expenditure with the LED lighting that was installed this year. So that was about two point one million, I want to say. Um, so that's a, that's a big change and you'll see that also on, on the next, on the next slide. So uh, the library has a healthy fund balance that uh allows some flush, flexibility and a cushion against uh bad economic times, uh, money for capital improvements, uh, money for employee benefit costs and the like, okay? All right, so that's the balance sheet. The next page is the statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance. So this shows how fund balance changed during the year. I'll kind of just jump to the bottom line, which is actually the third number up from the bottom. You can see net change in fund balance, six hundred eighty-five thousand, two hundred ninety-two dollars. So that's the amount that the fund balance went down this year. And basically, the reason it went down is because you guys have significant capital expenditures. I mean, that's the one line explanation, okay? But a little more detail on how did we get there. So total revenues, you can see seven million, eight hundred and six thousand, two hundred fifty-five dollars. That is down from last year, about two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, about three percent. Couple of things play into that. Of course, your property taxes, um, they go up incrementally every year with your taxable value, so that goes up. But as I said, your, your total revenue's decreased. The, the biggest reason for that is you can see that there was an investment loss incurred and that's shown as a negative revenue um there is in, in the statement. So um, so that's a two hundred ninety-two thousand dollar um investment loss. Last year, there was a ninety thousand dollar gain. So that, you know, almost four hundred thousand dollar swing is really what's driving the, the decrease in revenue. Uh, on the expenditure side, you can see total expenditures, eight million, four hundred ninety-one thousand, five hundred forty-seven dollars. That is up by about two point two million dollars this year, about thirty-five percent, uh mainly due to more cap books, capital spending. Um, but really, uh, also the, there, there was more spending across the board as the library was open this year for the full-time versus the prior year where there were significant periods of time where the library was closed and not incurring those costs. So um, nothing unusual, just, you know, reopening type costs and really more back to normal type of thing. Uh, the only thing unusual was, of course, the large project with the LED lighting throughout the library. Okay, I've got a few graphs and then I'll be done. Um, the first one is a five-year comparison of general fund, revenues, expenditures, and fund balance. So I like to look at um each one of these bars kind of individually to, to sort of tell the story here. Um, you can see that the revenues uh have increased slightly each year. Until this year, they actually went down. So and, and, and like I said, that was due to the investment loss. Um, that's something that you guys have never had before, is an investment loss of that magnitude, so. So the, the, the revenues uh are on a pretty steady trend there. Uh, on the expenditure side, you can see that, that they go up and down. They tend to bounce around. And the reason that they bounce around is when you have some significant items. So um, I would characterize um, what was the first choice? Can anybody else have this? Is it? Yeah, twenty eighteen. Um, twenty eighteen and twenty twenty-one is pretty normal years. On the expenditure side, you can see they're very comparable. But you can also see that twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, and twenty twenty-two were higher. Um, twenty nineteen was, was um high because uh that was the year that the library established the OPEB trust. So that was when, there was a significant deposit of funds in, into the OPEB trust that's restricted for the use of, of our, for the payment of those benefits. Uh, in twenty twenty, uh, there was a significant project where the roof of the library was replaced. And then in twenty twenty-two, as I said, there's the LED lighting. So your expenditures tend to kind of bounce around um with major uh items like that. So I, I would look at kind of twenty eighteen and twenty twenty-one as sort of the floor of, of the expenditures. Anything more than that is just those, you know, special items, okay? And then, so the fund balance kind of goes with that. So you can see that the, the fund balance went down in um, uh, in twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, and twenty twenty-two uh after going up in um, in, in twenty twenty, or twenty twenty-one, I'm sorry. My notes are covering up the years here, so I can't open. Turn around with that, so. All right. So the next graph, the next two graphs kind of break down the revenues and the expenditures. And so what we did here was, we just pulled out, so obviously the library is um mainly funded through property taxes. And this shows kind of the incremental increases of the property taxes here over the last five years. And it also shows um also just um the state shared revenue and grants. You can see that that is much smaller than the, than the, than the property taxes. And then you can see everything else is kind of other. And you can see that the other is even negative. So that kind of struck me when I saw this and I, I kind of crinkled my nose when I saw that and thought, wow, negative? And then it occurred to me, yeah, that's, that's the investment loss. And that's what that is. So that, that's correct. Um, so that's uh, that's the revenue graph.
May I ask, the state share revenue, is that usually a percentage of population? So did population actually go down?
No.
So why would, why would that?
Other communities grew.
And it's also in relation to your, you know, your property taxes and.
It also was impacted by the.
Well, just the way that looks, so.
I don't know why it's still in relation to. Yeah, just surprising, okay.
Actually, it was discussed today at that class that I was at. It was a rather complicated formula for figuring out.
Also, um, penal fines are a source of.
Also, um penal fines are a source of funding, and I know that went down significantly during the pandemic.
Yeah, because those penal fines come from traffic tickets. So less people are driving, less traffic tickets, less penal fine.
It's it's not, not compared to property taxes, but for us.
And the last graph I have for you, um this is formatted a little bit differently, and 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 so um just bear with me on this, but this this graph kind of groups the same sort of information for expenditures by year. So again, if you look at personnel, which is the largest cost area of the library, you can see that um with the exception of twenty nineteen, so twenty nineteen, that was the OPEB contribution. So that's why that's that's spiked up so much. But if you kind of take out that sort of unusual activity, you can see that the personnel costs of the library are trending steadily upward. Um and then other things are uh library materials and services. So that's um the red line, and you can see that there's really no trend there. The library spends about the same amount every year on on those items. Uh facilities and equipment, um you can see that that is also pretty steady. And then there's the purple bar, which is just everything else. And then there's capital outlays. You can see in twenty twenty and twenty twenty two, there were significant capital outlays. So those are included there as well.
Yeah, but it wasn't as expensive as the roof and the LED lighting.
Oh, because it measured a million. But I
Yeah.
I thought it was too late, twenty nineteen.
Was it the same year as the as the as the roof?
I think it was. Yeah, I think it was twenty nineteen, yeah.
Twenty twenty.
Twenty nineteen. It was, it was summer of twenty nineteen when we did the roof, and fall, we did the floor.
Okay.
Oh, that's right, because these fiscal years are just in March, which is just
Yeah, you're right.
Yeah, yeah. So when you think of nineteen, that's actually the twenty fiscal year.
You're right, we did do it at the same time.
Yeah.
Um the last thing I wanted to talk about is the um the staple letter that gets issued with the audit, and that's that's, I handed that out as well. I call that the governance letter, which is uh, which is something that we issue under auditing standard that is um part of every audit that we do. So every every time that we do an audit, we issue a letter similar to this. This is a uh addressed to management and the board of directors. Uh most of the letter is a form letter, but it communicates um several significant issues related to the audit. Now, um really, there's nothing in this letter that I would characterize as significant or unusual or um but uh it it certainly could be. You know, if if there were things that we found during the audit that need to be communicated, um this is where they would be, okay? So this letter is three pages, which is about as short as it can ever be. Um I've I've been part of, you know, audits where those these letters get to be fifteen or twenty pages. So it it can be, you know, when we have a lot of adjustments, because we'll put all the adjustments in there, past adjustments, you know, internal control issues, all those kinds of things, and all be in this letter. So really, this letter is is kind of bare bones. So what it does have um is it it talks about planned timing and scope of the audit. It talks about um any estimates used in the financial statements, any new accounting standards that were issued um or not issued, that were um that were implemented this year, uh some informational items. Discusses any difficulties or disagreements that we had, which of course, we had none of those. Uh any misstatements that we noted, which were not, in other words, anything we found that was wrong, um none of those. And uh if we had any management comments, those would be there as well, which of course, we have none, so um as I stated before, so. Um if you have any questions, that's all I have.
Are there any questions for Ellen? Thank you, Ellen, very much. We appreciate it.
Just on behalf of the finance committee.
Sure, please.
To give you guys some assurance, we did go through this quite thoroughly. And just a couple of things I'd point out, if you go back to his slide three, we have, there's a lot of cash or assets on the library's name. And just to make that clear, we we have a lot of future expenditures coming. This is, you know, you you could misperceive that, that it's just cash that has no reason to be there as I think about our next millage. So I asked Monica, once she gets settled, to help us get a schedule of how much are the future assets? What we're owe, what we know we owe our employees for healthcare, what we know we owe them for sick leave, what we know we have to spend to keep the the building running and improved in the in the fashion that the community has become accustomed to. So we can see, to help us with our millage initiative, to show people that we do need, in fact, need a millage. And then we talked about the investment losses a couple of times. These aren't um Alan, realized losses per se. Remember, this is a measurement at a point in time. So as the investment value changes, that doesn't mean, but I don't, we haven't mismanaged the assets, even though we have lost money. It's just a function of the way the accounting for it works. But do you feel that's accurate?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. The it's, the 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 investments are reported at market value. So when market value declines, it doesn't mean that it's a realized, you know, loss.
Right.
They they have declined and done.
It's like your 401K, right? Isn't that right?
Except it's shockingly conservative, because we don't govern anything. We can't invest in anything.
We have triplets.
But yes, it's all very um conservative. And then one other thing, just to point out, on the management letter, you'll see here on page two, they talk a lot about cybersecurity, which we all know is incredibly important. Um one of their recommendations is that we document our program. We, I've asked Tara to please work on documentation of our program throughout the year. Of all these things, I think we're, we have an A plus in every one except for that one, and we're gonna may try to get an A plus in that one throughout the course of the next year.
What do you mean, document our program? What are you referring to?
So if you look at page two there, and you'll see what it says, but it's, we have a lot of procedures and controls. We we protect patrons' information. We have systems to make sure that we're not hacked. We test those systems. But we don't necessarily write, have it written down that we're doing all these things. That's fairly put.
Yep.
Um and I I don't know if this might be helpful or not, because I don't know what you're um what you're currently doing, but I have noticed my job, seeing that other libraries are requesting from us um security measures that we are doing in any of the systems, or we don't really have subscriptions, but it would be for sure the same with subscriptions, and how vendors are safeguarding patron information. And so if that isn't potentially a practice that you're asking up from your vendors today, and I assume that you are in some cases, or most cases, um that's probably a good thing to be, that would help. Being able to assure the public that we are protecting patron information, as you know, can be really, yes, um a question asked. We definitely worry about that, and like, Shane said, we have measures in place. We just have to get it down on paper, yeah.
Other questions or comments for Ellen while he's here? Do you still have a long commute up to Lansing?
No, I live in Clarkston now.
Still a little bit, but not as bad.
Yeah.
Keith, do you have any questions?
No, all my questions were answered.
You were answered, okay.
I'm good, thank you.
Great.
Well, we have no more questions for um Ellen. Again, thank you, and thanks to staff, um Sandy and Toby and of course Tara. Um there is a motion on page twenty nine, and Shane, if you'll take that um and read that for us, that would be great.
Sure. I move to accept the fiscal year twenty one, twenty two audit report as presented and placed on file.
Is there a second, please?
One second.
Any more discussion? No? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Alright. Your work is done, sir. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ellen.
Enjoy the fall and upcoming holidays and everything, so.
I will, I will. And Monica will be in touch.
Yep.
Alright, yep. And remember, anything you want to need or any questions you have, just pick up the phone. It's totally fine. Yeah. We we we'd like to say that we're your auditors year round, not just um at the end of the year, so.
Thanks, Ellen. Nice to see you.
Thank you, you too. Enjoy your meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Take care.
Bye, Ellen. So the next thing under new business is our pension and other post-employment benefits, OPEB reports.
Oh, you did.
I didn't practice. That's probably why I did so well. Um so and um I'm going to turn again that over to Tara for an overview on that, please.
Was that in the deck? I'm sorry if I missed that.
Um yeah, it was in the packet. There's a memo.
It's on page eighty two. Sorry.
It's okay.
But you did write that down for me.
I did.
Thank you.
There's a memo, and then there are two really small spreadsheet, or big spreadsheets with small font.
Testing your eyes, but you don't have a glass.
I'm sorry that I missed that.
If you, um
Paige, there's, there should be a bar here that's usually faster, that you can slide your finger across. There you go.
Alright, so these reports um are part of our compliance with PA two oh two, which is a law that requires um public employers to fund their pension liabilities. It was passed in twenty seventeen. So Alan talks a lot about the OPEB and the trust that we created. That was part of that law and our compliance with that law. And another thing that we have to do to comply with that is we have to file some reports every year to the state of Michigan. So what follows the memo are the two reports. And there's, there's no action needed on your part, and you don't need to analyze this really small font. Um these are provided for your information and so that you can be assured that we're in compliance with our reporting obligation on that. Uh Sammy Byrd um was gracious enough to handle this report for us this year, because Monica was just starting. Um and I had never done it before, so she handled this reporting. If you have any questions, I would probably have to get back to you on them, but yeah.
This, remember, you saw this chart. We just went over the seven. You see how this bar goes up? This is because we made a big contribution to the pension system, because we have, so we are in great, in my personal opinion, and as a finance committee member, we're in great shape as compared to other organizations like that.
I would say we're probably so unique in that, because
I think we are too, yes.
To be fully funded, I I I cannot
And to a
in the top of my head, think of one other organization, not, certainly not a library.
To be fully funded, the year that it was established, I think other organizations, they're taking thirty, forty years in order to be, just being forty percent funded in their OPEBs.
Is it a requirement that it goes into a trust?
You know, that I'm not sure about. I don't think so, but we, maybe it is, because
Because of the percentage that we had to
It's it's a restricted account. I don't know, I don't know if it's an actual trust or not, but it's not like that's just sitting over in Co-Rica.
What do you mean, with source and
We can allow it to, I said.
Trust. Yes, it's a trust.
Yeah, so weren't we required to put X amount, like a sixty percent or something?
We had to put at least forty percent.
Forty percent, okay.
Yeah.
We have, it's expected to grow.
Yes.
As an endowment of sorts, if I'm, if I'm understanding what you're saying, restricted trust, whatever, it's expected to grow and and function like an endowment in that you have money in the bank for
Yes.
any of these pensions or other funds that need to be paid out.
Yes.
Promissory.
And we rely on our friends at the township to help us.
And it has grown, grown. It's been very successful in its, in its strengths, and yeah, we're very pleased.
Our OPEB obligations are one hundred percent funded. The trust has about sixty percent of that funding. It started at forty, and then it's grown to a little over sixty. The rest of that money is in our fund balance and that um committed category.
Is there a contribution to it each year as well?
No.
Just, okay.
Just hanging out there. We did have to make a contribution the second year, because the investments tanked, and then we were under that forty percent funding. So we had to put a little bit more in, but then it just came right back up.
Even in this quarter?
Well, that was twenty, it was before the pandemic.
No, it was
Maybe it was the year of the
Yeah, that's true, yeah, yeah. So it was that year.
So um any other questions or comments on these fund reports? Alright, well then, there's no motion or action needed. We will just, we keep these on file, and they've already been sent to the state. So we're in compliance there.
And you'll hear this every year, so you'll see that. Um so let's go to the items that were removed from the consent agenda. Shane had a question on seven A.
Yeah, which is page twelve of our packets. And I I noticed that you expounded on a lot of these expenses. I feel like you tried really hard to get them all. Thank you for that. Uh I just had questions on two of them. Is Siemens Industry one for the upgrade to our HVAC software and infrastructure? Can you tell me a little more about that?
Yeah, um so there's two parts to that. We have some software that runs our HVAC system. It hangs out on a PC in the Facility Services Department head office. It's a program called Dasego. It's running on a Windows ninety eight machine right now. Um it's a big security risk, yeah.
That sounds old.
Yeah.
That's my professional opinion.
It it keep, it literally keeps Paul, our systems department head, up at night. Um and so in order to migrate it to a more upgraded server, we have to upgrade the whole system. Siemens is very proprietary in all of their software and components, and so they're charging us a lot of money to make that upgrade. Part of that is upgrading the components of the HVAC system, which are a bunch of sensors and other mechanical things that live in the ceiling and in the air handler units. And that is a um to kick that project off too, so that's what that, those payments are to kick off both of those upgrades.
Okay. And the one right below it, the for the what, for the uh stormwater investigation services?
Yeah, so um in the winter, we engaged with a firm, Salting to Decor, to investigate yet again our lower level water problems.
Chapter thirteen.
Yes. Um and they just turned in their report, and I need to convene a building and grounds committee meeting and share that with people. That's coming. Everybody is.
Everyone, that's, that is a
I wonder, a list of committees, I'm not up, but we can find one later.
The cooking committee.
We have to wait.
Y'all got it?
We have to wait till after the election.
There we go.
Fair point, yeah. Um and then kindly, if you guys could skip to page fourteen, there's just three on here. We have a payment to principal life insurance. What's that?
It's um uh we get some life insurance and um disability insurance for our part-time staff.
Oh, okay. And just from my own personal application, the car trucking payment, what's that?
Garbage pickup.
That's a nice, catchy name.
There you go.
And what is EBSCO Systems, Information Systems?
EBSCO is a library vendor. Um we buy some databases and maybe some reference books or something through them.
Great, thank you.
Hi. Thanks, Shane. Um I think we both found it at the same time. Page twenty is the room rental. Uh and Keith had a question about that.
Oh, I hope it's, people don't think it's a minor question, but um I was noticing that we don't really make a lot of money from the room rentals. It's like in the hundreds, basically. And then there was a comment in the audit, no, not the, somewhere about utilization, the metrics of utilization, that there was eleven outside uses of the room and twenty-three uses of the room by by staff. So it just seemed to me that when you look at the number of meeting rooms that are here, and if you consider what it costs to build those rooms and what it costs to maintain them, the return on the investment of those rooms is not that, not that great. Um so should the library be doing more to maybe advertise the fact that these rooms exist so that there's more than eleven utilizations of them by the outside uh public? And should the library be charging more money to use those? So that when you consider that asset, just that the return on it is a little bit higher? Because right now, the return on it is probably very, very low. So just my thought, if there's any way or does it, does it make sense to try and just get more use of the rooms and get more revenue out of them?
We consider it a service to the community to offer those rooms, so we're we're not looking to that to make us a ton of money. Um because we're the only community center in the in the township, it's a place where people can gather. It's neutral space. Um it's really down because of the pandemic. Um I think, I, off the top of my head, I can't think of what they, what the usage normally is.
Okay.
But it's very, these are slow to come back. We have not had a lot of uh room reservations. Um a little marketing campaign is probably a great idea, um something we can consider, because we have done that in the past. But um if you think of it more as a service we're providing to the community, and that fee is, it's kind of a regulator. It makes people uh place value on it and brings in a little bit of money as well.
And it's quite helpful to nonprofits, um because um being on many of the boards, we've used, we've utilized the rooms.
Okay.
And they are extremely helpful, um you know, particularly in a community room with a kitchen, if you have an event that um your nonprofit wants to do. And you're not being gouged at all, so.
No, it's, yeah, it's very affordable compared to what you might get at like a hotel.
At a restaurant or a hotel, yeah, so it's
Yeah, homeowners associations uh use meeting room three. Meeting room three is free to nonprofits. So we have tons of homeowners associations who use that room to their board meetings.
Okay.
And then you had a question about water, and that I'm finding on page twenty three.
Yeah, I was just asking, it was a very good point brought up by Danny, I think a few, maybe a couple of months ago, about trying to install that separate meter, because it's very clear that the water usage increases by a factor of ten in the summer. So presumably, that's something Increases by a factor of ten in the summer, so presumably, that's something that'll get pursued once the facilities person comes in, and of course, there's six months before. The water gets used again, so I was just wondering about that.
Yeah, you're right that I was putting that on the list of things to do for the new facilities person.
That seems like that would be an excellent cost saver.
However, um, I just, there was just an article in Downtown Publications about new water meters being installed across the township. Um, so I reached out to um, Noah, whose last name I forget, just to ask him what we need to do, he said he would reach out to us. And then Jerry Ashley, who's our full-time maintenance person, uh, casually mentioned recently that there is a separate meter for the sprinkler system. So I need to talk to Jerry more about that, find out if it's what Danny was referring to. And yeah, more will be explored on that later.
That's one of my questions.
Thanks, Keith.
All right.
Um, so we need to have a motion to approve any, or the items that were removed from the consent agenda, so would someone make that motion, please? Thank you, Keith, is there a second? Thank you, all those in favor? Anyone opposed?
No.
Okay, so. So we're moving on to my favorite subject, the other other, and this is our opportunity to discuss things that. Might not be on the agenda itself, and is there anything anyone would like to bring up?
Well, normally Danny would give a Friends.
Oh, she would, you're right, yeah.
Report, um, and I was not prepared until just now, I can't tell you this one item of interest for the Friends. The Friends were lucky enough to receive several large bequests uh, during the pandemic, so they have a nice little nest egg of about a hundred grand right now. And seventy-seven thousand of that is from very large gifts, five hundred or more, and they are thinking about making some kind of reserve fund. We're not sure what that's gonna look like, they wanna have that money not be lazy money to use your term. So there, that's something that they're working on. They would reserve that then for, you know, normally they respond to our wish list and give us. Between like, six and fifteen thousand dollars, three times a year, um, this would be for bigger projects, more involved projects.
They're a five oh one C three, aren't they?
They are.
So they're bound by certain rules, different from the library, but they still have to to make sure that they adhere to those.
Yes.
Um, they just can't really nearly um, put things in, because you know, obviously, it's money that they've earned or it's been queaved, and we don't want that just to go out the windows.
It's restricted in a way.
Yes, absolutely, I don't think it's, I don't think their hands are as tied as ours are.
No.
But um, they have a little bit more freedoms.
Unless the person that gave the money specified how it was spent, right?
Right.
It's also worth mentioning at the Friends meeting that uh, Tom Desk had once proposed, former trustee. That they suggest rounding up at the book sales, and this continues to generate revenue at each book sale, and the most recent one, it was a hundred and fifty-one extra dollars just around that. And this seems to be a pretty consistent average, and it was an exemplary book sale for August, which is usually a slow month, they keep hitting high records. The number was five thousand three hundred and fifty-three dollars and fifty cents of the August book sale.
Yeah, they're doing really great.
Second Saturday sale, excuse me.
They keep getting great donations, and they're merchandising things well.
Yeah, well, I think that, um, I know that the um. Uh, oh gosh, Bookstock, um, they have started a plan though, because they realize that now people are downsizing, and people are getting older, and their collections are getting smaller. But that can only last, that can only be sustained for a certain amount of years, so they're really looking towards other ideas. Um, and it is the largest used book sale in Michigan, um, and they they generate so much money, but it's um, they're, they're looking.
Yeah, it's not gonna last forever, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so, but right now, people are just, that's what they're doing, cleaning out shelves and getting rid of books, so.
So, I have a question about the, the book shop. When I break shop. Library shop, um, yes, because they sell more than books, I noticed, I'd never been in there before, so I stopped in, nobody was there, um, which I understand why. Where's, where do those books come from, from, from the Friends?
Donations.
From donations, so if they're not sold through the book sales.
They call special books for that, they know what's gonna sell.
Yeah.
And they are, and so, yeah, there's a couple of volunteers who go through all the donations and they sort things, especially for the shop.
That makes about a thousand dollars a month?
Yeah, I just, yeah, I've seen it in the budget.
Well, they would make a lot more if they had more of those little mice. My wife bought two of those, she just couldn't resist them, she was talking about them.
So, those.
Did we meet the guys?
Those were made by Madeline Harris, who was um, in the cohort of folks who applied to be on the trustees when you two were selected. And actually, I just reached out to her today, because she works for Comerica Bank, she's come to a couple of ambassadors meetings, and um. The Friends thought maybe she could assist them with their reserve fund project.
Oh, yeah, oh, I'm sure she'd love that.
Yeah, she's, I think she's making some felt dragons.
Yeah, she um, spoke about that during her interview, so it was quite interesting, so I have to go take a look at them.
Are they in there?
There's there, if they have an open soul, really.
The mice are.
The glass pieces, they're really cute.
Yes, I'm sure there's a, you can sell an infinite number of those.
There you go, the holidays are coming. Um, I don't, is there any other other other, this might be a first for me?
Yeah, I just wanna plug those strategic planning retreat next week.
Yes, September twenty seventh from nine to one, in this room?
Yes.
Okay.
We've just got.
One to five.
One to five, that's right.
Okay, sorry. Yes, yes.
I have it down as one to five.
That's right, when you said that this morning, I thought that wasn't ready.
Who's gonna be at that?
When did we change it to one to five?
Um, just us, I, was it always one to five?
I believe it was decided at the, at last month's board meeting.
Oh, that's one I had to miss, okay, okay, that's.
And I did too, so I'm just gonna blame it on that.
So one to five?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll just make.
We will have um, food?
We will, so that's my drive.
We will.
Oh, well, in that case.
It will just be the board, me, Catherine, and London, um, and then the strategic planning consultant, we just received the learning report earlier, this was actually last night.
A draft, is it?
Yes, and um, it's gonna be fun to go through it, so.
And it's a firm five, correct?
Firm five.
Okay, good, okay.
If not sooner.
Okay, all right, okay.
I think she had originally slated three hours, and we said one to five to be on the safe side.
Gotcha. Okay.
The learning report, you should receive that by end of day Thursday.
Okay.
To review before the retreat.
Good, okay, thank you, like to see it before the retreat, yeah.
Yes.
End of day, uh, Thursday this week.
Yes.
Okay.
Um, with that, our next scheduled meeting is Tuesday, October eighteenth, and the topic, one of the topics is going to be policy review. We just mentioned September twenty seventh, the strategic plan from one to five, um, we have an October twenty fifth ambassadors meeting at seven P M. And I believe that's it, date wise. Oh, and December fourth. Put it in your calendars.
December fourth.
Yeah, I guess we're just, we should start.
This ambassadors meeting, not everybody is to attend that, it's just.
Ambassador.
Ambassadors?
Oh, the ambassadors, I'm sorry, yes, I, I, I didn't hear you well.
That's okay. It's not, it's not necessarily mandatory for um, for the board, but it's nice to have them over to them.
No, I will definitely be there, I enjoy that.
And particularly since most of the people there have either applied for this position and or are on this board, so, or or um, have been on the board. Cut, uh, I forget his name.
Oh, Lyle.
Lyle, um, yeah, he used to be a board member, so, um, anyway, very good, so with that, I guess, at seven fifty-four. On September twentieth, uh, the last day of summer. Enjoy your night and happy fall tomorrow. There we go, you're welcome.
Thank you.
And we'll see you on the twenty seventh, from one to five.